Meet, uh, speak on the city council meeting now being called an order. Councilman Flurry will give us our prayer and Councilman Corbin will lead us in.
Let us pray. Oh God, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for this city of Shreveport, that, Lord, we pray for the citizens, we pray for the workers, staff, I pray for the mayor, pray for the city council, I pray for the first responders, and I thank you, God, for each employee that gives his best every day. Now let us, Lord, have wisdom and knowledge, guide us and protect us, forgive us of our sins, for we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Flurry, can you call it on, please?
Councilman Bratt.
Present.
Councilman Emerson.
Here.
Councilman James.
Present.
Councilman Carver.
Present.
Councilman Ford.
Present.
And Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the May 21st and 22nd.
I'll second that motion.
They're moved by Councilman Corbin and seconded by the vice chair, please. The motion carries with six and one absentee. Does any council member have any rewards, recognitions, or distinguished guests they'd like to mention at this time? Councilman Corbin?
Just a quick announcement, Mr. Chairman, there will be an open house tonight at Cato Middle Magnet Auditorium for folks that may be impacted by a swept co construction project that will go from the substation by A.B. Palmer Park to the Fronilicus Road Substation. Primarily, this would be folks who live in the Spring Lake area. But open house at Cato Middle Magnet from 5:00 to 7:00, there's a chance to see what upgrades to service lines will happen and get any questions answered.
Point of order, will there be refreshments?
There, there might be beverages and cookies.
I mean, you're a ten councilman.
That's right. Don't leave anything, give good refreshments.
I will save some for you.
Anyone else? Madam Mayor or anyone from administration have any awards or recognition that they'd like to present?
Yes, sir, we have one recognition and we have some announcements. At this time, we would like to recognize a 2018 Spring Leadership Academy in attendance today here at City Council. This is their final course assignment for graduation. The academy is a six-month professional development program for current and aspiring leaders of this city. Employees are trained on several different topics from team building, business writing, conflict resolution, decision-making, to city rules and regulations. This Thursday, the academy will serve the public at the Christian Services Center as well as install shelves and racks for the center's clothes closet. At this time, I would like to have the class please stand and be recognized. Will you please stand, leadership class? Let's give them a round of applause. Okay. Thank you so much, fine group of employees. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you would like, I can finish these announcements.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. Uh, we're honored, uh, we were honored this month to pay homage to our fallen soldiers with the tribute towers that were displayed along our riverfront behind the Shreveport Aquarium from June 1st through June 6th. The display was a photographic war memorial that honored the country's military fallen from the war on terror in two, in 2001 to the present. Remembering our fallen is designed to travel and include both military and personal photos. I again would like to thank our sponsors that partnered with the city of Shreveport to bring the tribute towers here to our city. They were Centus Corporation, Community Bank of Louisiana, and KTBS/KPXJ. I'm also proud to announce that our city has been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a 2017 Tree City USA. Shreveport is one of more than 3,400 Tree City USAs with a combined population of 140 million. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the U.S. Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters. Uh, Shreveport Police Department will hold its 78th Police Basic Training Class Commisment at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 14th, at the Louisiana State Exhibit Museum on Greenwood Road. Each of you is invited to take part in the graduation celebration of our new recruits. Also this week, we will hold a ribbon-cutting ceremony at our Sportran Southwest Hub for the completion of the second phase of that project, which is the new facility that has restrooms, a break room for drivers, and an office for our community policing officers. That event will be held at 2:00 p.m. Friday, June 15th, at the hub located at 6805 St. Vincent Avenue. This Saturday also, the city of Shreveport and Neighborhood Assistance Corporation of America will present a free homebuyer workshop in celebration of National Homeownership Month. The event will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Independent Stadium Skybox Club Level, 3301 Perishing Boulevard. To reserve a seat, those interested can call Community Development at 318-673-7503. You may call NACA, the total free number is 1-888-302-6222. Sign up on the website at www.naca, N-A-C-A dot com. Also on Saturday, we have a lot of these, at the same time, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., we will celebrate our employees at the annual Employee Appreciation Picnic at Southern Hills Park. We want all our employees to come out with their families and enjoy some free food and fun, and of course, council members, you're all invited to attend with your families as well. We hope to see everyone out for a fun time in the park this weekend. Our city is, well, one other invite for this Saturday, you are invited to attend, and of course, Mayor Tyler and Councilwoman Stephanie Lynch will host a street dedication and unveiling ceremony for former councilman Joe Shine, Saturday, June 16th, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. at the corner of Alton Street, uh, Alton Street and Henry Street. Our city is heavily invested in our children this summer. Between SPAR Community Development, SPD, and the mayor's office, we will serve more than 13,000 young people this summer with activities and camps that include aquatics, basketball programs, boating, safety, self-esteem workshops, summer jobs, and internships. Of course, SPD has a long history of engaging our city's youth as part of an inclusive strategy to build collaborative partnerships with those they have sworn to serve. Interacting with children in a safe, non-confrontational environment allows police officers to establish positive, healthy relationships that will hopefully last a long time, a lifetime. We're very proud to be able to support our youth and help them to become productive adults in our community. And I had a list of some of those activities that just our police department, but if you will call our police department, they will give you some of those camps. Some of them, they do all year long, some they do just during the summer. And I believe that is the end of the announcements that we have for today, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Okay. Could you tell me, what time was the, um, the police, uh, graduation ceremony?
Okay, it's gonna be...
Are you gonna make her go through all of them?
I'll wait back to the back.
That's okay. I have it right here, it's gonna be this Thursday, June 14th, 9:00 a.m. Louisiana State Exhibit Museum on Greenwood Road. Okay?
I'll keep the speaker.
I am... You have a role in this.
Any council member have any questions, officer, relative to property standards? None? Did you have something you need to present to us, sir? Thank you. We have, uh, Ms. Fields Jones emailed us our collection, connection claim. And Mr. Bratt?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I sent it around.
Okay. Here, Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
No, sir.
We have the following.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna suggest, since the two requests to speak are items that we're gonna ask to bring up earlier in the agenda, that we wait for those who are about to address the ordinance itself and let the public speakers speak right before the ordinance, if that makes sense. It's my proposal, if anybody else has any issue with that?
We didn't hear you, Oliver, I couldn't hear you then.
Oh, maybe I wasn't close enough to the microphone. So, what I'm proposing, since all of our public comments are on two items on the agenda, and there's been suggestion that we move those forward in the agenda, I suggest we hold those public comments until we actually bring up the piece of legislation, because they're very germane to the specific piece of legislation. We've certainly done that in the past unless anybody has an objection to it.
I have no objections, Mr. Chair, but, uh, at what point do you think we need to move the suspended rules and bring them to us?
As soon as we finish consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay. All right. No executive, without executive orders? Mr. Thompson, let's continue to items to be addressed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there are four items on the consent agenda resolution, 76, 77, 78, and 79. A motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Mentioned by Councilman Corbin and seconded by the vice chair. No discussion, please vote. Passes with six and one absentee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to suspend the rules and take up, in this order, ordinance 36, 45, and 47, and allow public comments on each of those as after the ordinance is read.
After all is read.
Second, wait, motion. Wait, correct. Which, what's your order again?
36, 45, and 47.
That's, that's, that's the zoning ones, but, um, oh, you do have 45. Okay, 36, 45, and 47.
Yeah.
Got it.
It's been moved by...
Yep, second.
It's been moved by Councilman Corbin and seconded by Councilman Emerson. Any discussions? Please vote. Motion carries with six and one absentee.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance 36 is a zoning matter, case number 15-18. It amends the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport by rezoning property located approximately 158 feet west of Jewella Avenue from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Now I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance.
A second.
Discussion?
Motion by Councilman, by the vice chair and seconded by Councilman Bratt. Discussion, vice chair.
Okay, so, I don't have any comments on this, but we're not sure if the people involved in this, they have been to this meeting several times in the past, so I'm gonna ask in the crowd if there's anybody here for this specific ordinance. Unfortunately, the councilwoman that represents this district is unable to be here. She has communicated, you know, what she sees as the issues here, and she has made a suggestion, and so I'm falling forward with her suggestion to approve the ordinance. I'll second. Or, is that already? Sorry, seconded. Yeah. That was just an explanation.
Any other discussion, say a none, please vote. Motion carries with six and one absentee.
Ordinance 45 amends the 2018 capital improvement budget. It appropriates funds received from the EDA, Economic Development Administration grant.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Emerson and seconded by the vice chair.
If we have some comments.
Do you have some comments as well?
Yeah, discussion, I'm doing a current discussion. Okay, um, Liz Swain. And to remind everybody, you have three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, everyone, Liz Swain, 416 Cotton Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Before I get started, I would like to invite everyone in the audience who is here in support of this today to stand up and wave to our council members.
Wave back.
Thank you all so much. Gentlemen, at first, I wanted to let you know that we had planned the full dog and pony show for you today. Um, we were going to have a number of people come up and talk to you about different things, but you know what? You get what this is all about. You do not need the dog and pony show. This is not just about art and culture. This is not just about green grass. At the heart of it, it's about investment, it's about projects, it's about economic development, and it's about properties coming back online that have been offline for so long that we have forgotten that they exist. I work with developers all the time at the Downtown Development Authority, and to get them to want to invest, they have to see upside potential. There has to be some. It's not about love. In some cases, it is, or partially. It's about return, it's about return on investment. There are a lot of other places that we can invest our dollars. We have to make it so they want to invest here. Something has to be happening to encourage them to take the risk here, and this is that something. We've been talking about this for years, and people have bought into this vision. The hard numbers in this nine-block area of downtown are stronger than they have been since the 1960s. These are numbers that we all want. Occupancies are up, interest is up, investment is up, people are spending money, they are putting money into their buildings, they are creating apartments and private residences and commercial spaces. We're currently looking at three major rehabilitation projects to the tune of millions of dollars, and all three of these are private investment dollars. When we do the math, downtown is the place where we see the biggest return on our investment dollars in terms of our taxes, our sales tax, our property tax. And these taxes do not go into a pot that's marked downtown only. They go into every district in our neighborhoods to do the things that we need to, to see done, that we want to see done. We want the general fund to continue to grow, and we believe that we can assist in helping with this. We want to put more money into that pot, with a space that we consider both an amenity and an asset. This is truly a case where green, as in grass, equals green, as in money. We ask for, and we very much appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, Liz, I should have asked, does the heretofore dog and pony that we're not gonna see now include these people that have requested to speak, or?
I do not know.
Okay. I know that that next person, I noticed, was separate, was a separate group.
Most separate.
Come, please come, oh, please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Either Mike?
Please.
Sir? The lodge, the lodge, tell them one.
My name is Alexis Michelle. I live at 740 Austin Place, which is currently downtown. I accidentally put the wrong number on the docket number. I totally agree with her. It will help bring jobs, it's better for the environment, there'll be more trees, parks and recreation, and people will want to actually visit downtown more, because it's, it's just empty parking lots. That's, that's not exactly what you want to show as far as downtown. What, what do we represent? What, what do we stand for? It's not empty parking lots. And it'll bring more tourists, and it's, it's just better for the environment. It, it's a really good opportunity, is what I believe. And I, I totally agree with her on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tim Wright, please.
I'm Tim Wright, my address is 850 and a half Texas Avenue. Hello, my name is Tim Wright, I'm the director and founder of Reform Shreveport. I stand here on behalf of my board members in support of the common. For those of you who do not know, the mission of Reform Shreveport is to grow a culture of engagement and trust between citizens, business owners, and public servants. By doing so, we can find pragmatic solutions and cultivate a more financially sound and prosperous Shreveport together. Two years ago, at our first public event, Chuck Marone, a professional engineer, public planner, and founder of the organization Strong Towns, visited the common. He was impressed and excited about the energy he found there, and was excited about the concept of what it could be. During that visit, Chuck shared a piece of advice with us that we passed on to our friends at Shreveport Common, and that we would like to share with you. Develop incrementally. These two words have since served as both encouragement and a guiding principle for us at Reform. It means that we should build one piece at a time and take small steps. Build a basic park, and then add features as the need arises. Since Chuck's visit, a grand plan for the common has been simplified in the legislation that we see today. Visions of water features, gardens, and other lavish appointments still persist. We do not know if these visions, in their current form, represent the needs or desired uses of the park. What is needed will only be known once the common is open and we see how people use the green space that is being discussed today. Who will the users of the park be? How will they use it? Standing before you now, it is impossible for you, for us, for Shreveport Common, or for anyone else to know. The speed at which downtown is seeing redevelopment means that we only have the faintest idea of what to expect in the coming years. As a result, it will be important that the ever-changing landscape for the city to be prepared to adapt and maneuver as we go. This cannot be done with a granite intricate plan, however, it can come from a continued commitment to the inclusiveness of the community in the planning process. This park should be an ambitious statement, not just for its amenities, but because it's a place that involves with the needs of those who use it. Today, the council has an opportunity to take the first step of many on this project. $1.2 million may not seem like a small step, but given the demolition and environmental remediation necessary, paired with the impact on nearby properties and neighborhoods, this more modest version of the park, we think, is a good start and a right-sized, value-added investment in the core of our city, just the kind the Shreveport Cattle Master Plan urges us to undertake. We encourage you all to approve the funding for the common, and in turn, encourage all of those involved with the project to allow the vision of what the park might have been to adapt and change in order to, uh, to move according to incremental development, one that evolves with the needs and desires of the community over time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Haley DeChantelle. I think, do the rest, do the rest of y'all wanna speak, or do you all want?
No, I think that everything that Liz Swain and Tim just said is something that I would echo, so thank you.
Okay, so when I call your name, if you, just raise your hand, and then I'll know you're not coming up here. Jack Allen, thank you, sir. John Lomax.
Stay in support, he's talking back.
Corey Mason.
She's back there.
Okay. John Beer. Yes, sir. Pam Atchison. This is a shocker, she doesn't wanna speak, but we, uh, here we go, there is a first time for everything.
Something tells me there might be a 20-minute poem that all rhymes, uh, that is about the common.
Okay.
Councilman Emerson.
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanna, um, you know, thank everybody who's here today to support this initiative. I wanna thank the mayor for, like I said yesterday, seeing an opportunity and matching it with a need that we had in our community. Uh, wanna thank everyone who's worked on this for a long time. I've been on this advocacy group since the beginning for this, for this, you know, redevelopment of this part of our community. And it's just been exciting to see how many people are involved in this from different levels. It was originally something that I think, um, you know, Mayor Tyler, I, I mean, even before Mayor Tyler, Mayor Glover and, um, and Pam, uh, you know, kind of were dealing with the aftermath of a fire that really threatened the future of our Arts Council. And instead of kind of wallowing in the negativity of that moment, they turned it around into an exciting opportunity to say, what if? What if we came together as a community? What if we came together to look at one of our most blighted areas and see about what is beautiful there, how we can find something that is common to the experience of all Shreveporters there, how we can make it an inclusive area? And, um, when Mayor Tyler took over in, in 2015, I remember one of the very first things that we did was had a, a press conference out there talking about some of the community development acts, aspects of that project. And, you know, it's been, uh, all types of disciplines and backgrounds that have come out to support that, people with different, um, you know, ways of seeing our community have come out and enjoyed it for a lot of different reasons, and that is the point. That is what not only is exciting to have this physical space where we can gather in our, in our, in the heart of our city, but really also to have a place that's representative of a lot of different people's ideas and experiences in our community, and I think that's something that's gonna be really important for defining who we are going forward, for giving hope and inspiration, that even in our most blighted parts of our city, we can, you know, come together to, to really add new energy and new enthusiasm and a bright future there, and this is a great step for that. So we appreciate everybody's support of this. Certainly don't wanna let this opportunity go by without getting a chance to thank Shelley and, um, the rest of her team that have been behind this, the rest of the, the group that has been meeting to kind of advocate for this and support this, uh, this vision in many different ways for a number of years. I know there's a lot of you here today, and it's all very, very appreciated. So I appreciate the council and their support of this vote, and I'd like to go ahead and call for the vote unless there's any questions.
No, please vote. I'm mostly there, I'm gonna stick.
Thank you very much. [applause]
It rezones property located between Trexel Drive and Montrose Drive from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-U-C and Urban Corridor District.
Okay. I guess we may make him...
Can we, can we get the comments first?
Certainly. Let's take comments first up on my list, in no particular order, is Tom Arseno.
Tom Arseno, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, 71101. I represent Superior Bar and Grill in this application. I'm pleased to announce to you today that I never was much of an athlete when I was growing up, but I finally, finally found a track and field position that I can occupy that I feel like I'm in training for, and it's a javelin catcher. In all seriousness, I've communicated with all of you the efforts to which Superior has gone to resolve, uh, resolve issues with, particularly with adjacent, adjacent properties. I sent you the illustration that I used yesterday to visit with you to show you the efforts to which Superior is going to reduce any impact on the persons who are immediately adjacent to this proposed parking lot. We believe that we have done everything we can to do that. I also do point out to you, as I sent you an email earlier today, that I have verified that the property across Montrose is zoned exactly the same way, and therefore, that property could be developed virtually any way that someone wanted to in the C-U-C district with only administrative site plan. So there is already the same amount of encroachment into this neighborhood that this application would involve. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know that many of the neighbors are here, and I can feel their stares. I know that many of the neighbors are here, and I can feel their stares, and I certainly have great respect for them, and have tried to work with them. They have been courteous, and we have tried to return the favor with them, but we believe this is an appropriate decision for you, and we would appreciate your support.
I have a question for you. Okay, and you did send an email today. So do you know what the previous zoning exactly was of that property before the UDC?
The, part of it, I can answer yes. I'm not sure what the property where Pizza Rev is, I'm not sure what its zoning was. I think the property behind that was rezoned with an E designation for storage and parking. And I think that was done in 2003.
Okay.
So that, that property, that whole strip has been zoned essentially commercial for the use that Superior is seeking to use currently since 2003.
Thank you. Mark, can you nod in accordance to verify that? Okay. We got a few people in line ahead of you here.
I didn't get my name in that pretty long time.
Okay, if you hand it to her, I'll put you on the list. Okay, next is Jennifer Goodpast.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Goodpast, I live at 737 Drexel Drive, Shreveport 71106. I'm the property directly next door to Superior Bar &amp; Grill, and the house that would, my backyard would be directly next door to the new proposed lot. I just really, I kind of, you know, we went over our issues before, we've been before you already. I just have a question. If I wanted to add on to my home, in order to do so, my home would have to be up to code, isn't that correct? If I needed, if I wanted to add on, and I had old knob and tube wiring in my home, then obviously I'd have to bring my current home up to the code. So my question is, if they're going to build a parking lot back there, doesn't the current parking lot have to be brought up to code? From what I understand, that there's any fixed structure on that property, that that property, there has to be a five-foot easement? Well, there's a dumpster on my property lot. So none of these things, I don't feel like have been taken into consideration. We've expressed our concerns in the past about the upkeep of the current lot, so who's going to be, who's going to be in charge of maintaining the aesthetics and the maintenance on the lot that's going to be in my backyard? There's no landscape buffer on the other side of my fence, between our fence and the property, the parking lot that's there now, so there's, none of that is already there. I understand that that was under the old code, but it seems like that should be all brought up to the current code. That's a huge concern that we have. I also would like to quote Alexis, because she just said a few minutes ago that no one wants to look at an empty parking lot. Well, that's exactly what we're going to see from our house, is a lot, a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we bring up Mark Sweeney to answer the actual question?
I would appreciate if you would.
Mark Sweeney, if you would. Did you hear her question?
Yeah, the, I can think the answer or the question was about the, why shouldn't everything be brought up to, and the way the code is set up, since this is an individual piece of property that's being added to the overall property that the owner has in terms of the overall development site, it is only that one site that has to be brought up to the UDC code. Now, if he was completely redoing his whole property, let's say he was doing a tear-down or a major expansion of his restaurant, that would trigger the requirement that all of the property would have to come into compliance. But since he's just doing a parcel that's being upgraded to a parking lot, then the landscaping buffer and the landscaping requirements and the screening fence requirement information is all that is required on that parcel. It will be the best-looking parcel of all of the parcels because of the UDC, but we can't go back and retrofit the other part unless the applicant does something to expand his current building, or does something that would trigger that requirement.
Okay, if I may ask a question while you're up here. So once these, I don't know how many tracks it is total, but let's say it's.
Three.
Three total?
Well, I mean, this, three parcels that include all of this, that's the parking lot, but there's other parcels, yes.
Okay, so is there any requirement to replat the whole thing as one?
Yes, sir. In fact, the stipulation, if you recall, when the MPC Board made its recommendation to approve this eight to zero for the rezoning, the stipulation is that they have to come in for an administrative replat of the property to join it to the adjacent properties to make it one property.
Okay, and so if that's the case, future development of some other type of development, if for some reason he didn't need the, or Superior didn't need the parking lot in the future, and they tried to sell what is today two tracks.
Yes.
He couldn't sell those separately from the entire.
That is true. That is true, because you can't just have a separate standalone parking lot in the CUC district. It has to be a part of the development, so it can't be just a parking lot. That's why he has to merge it with the other parcels to make it all one site, to stay consistent with the requirements of the UDC.
So it isn't really arguably developable separately once it's replatted?
No, sir.
And then if for some reason he petitioned to subdivide again, then what is the zoning of this, two plaits that are part of the big unit that then get re-subdivided later, what is the zoning of those two tracks?
Would still be the urban corridor zoning, and he would still have to, it'd have to be a part of an overall development that would include parking, but it has to have a structure on it, it has to serve it. In other words, it can't be a separate standalone parking lot, zoned CUC. So it has, here's the potential, he could, the whole intent of the CUC district was to revitalize Line Avenue and Yuri Drive. That's where most of the CUC zoning is in the city. The idea was to introduce apartment or mixed-use development, which allows for apartments or loft apartments above the second, on the second and third floor, and allow for retail on the bottom level. That was the intention, was to create greater viability and to pull the buildings closer to the street and closer to the sidewalk to make them more pedestrian-oriented. Now, mind you, Superior Grill, as it is designed to date, doesn't really meet all of those things. But at some point in time, the owner of the property could redevelop the site, but he'd have to come back in with a new site plan in which he could utilize all of those properties for some type of a mixed use. So there is the potential for future redevelopment, but you're not going to be able to parcel off a lot that is strictly for parking alone in the CUC district. It has to be a part of an overall development plan.
Hang tight, we'll bring, I'm sure we have some more.
All right.
So what he said, they can go back and possibly add like, well, they have to come back through the MPC, but they have to add like a drive-through or something on the side of it?
The answer is yes, if they modify after the initial modification, then it still has to go back through.
That's right.
Councilman Flora.
Mark, I didn't quite understand, I would like for you to repeat about the parking lot. Hit me again with that.
See, some zonings allow for parking to stand alone as a separate parking lot. In this situation, and under the CUC zoning, you can't just create a parking lot sitting by itself, and that be their use of that property. It has to be a part of another property. In this case, the applicant is being required to replat so that all those lots become one lot, where the Superior Grill Restaurant's located, incorporated into one lot, so that that parking is supporting the building, but it's not a separate standalone parking lot. Does that make sense? Because the intent was not to create whole vast areas of the city where you had just a parking lot out in the middle of a, of a, on a particular piece of property. We want it to be integrated into an overall development plan that includes the building, retail, shops, restaurants, whatever, but not generate the idea of a separate standalone parking lot.
So like a medical center?
Right.
If they was to add, tear down a house and add more differently, can they do that?
If you're in the medical center, that's going to be a different zoning, so odds are there may be greater flexibility there, because more than likely it's going to be what they call institutional campus zoning, which allows them greater flexibility. The CUC was meant to be more complementary to the adjacent properties and to the residences. It's meant to blend in and not to be obtrusive.
Okay, Jeff Goodpast, please. And I can see y'all organized yourselves so that you wouldn't have to.
My name is Jeff Goodpast, I live at 737 Drexel, Shreveport, 71106. So first of all, thank you all. Thank you, Councilman Bowman, for coming out and seeing what we have to look at, but I had something prepared, but I'm just kind of going to speak from the heart. You know, of course, we oppose this, and you've heard a lot of the ins and outs of it, and I think we've gotten a little bit of lip service here and there, and then after the last council meeting, the owner reached out to me and kind of apologized, and said, you know, I think we went around this the wrong way, and what can we do to work together? And of course, he, at that time, we talked about building the wall, and at that, and I said, I don't, you know, the last thing was $150,000 to build it, which I thought was absurd, but he came back and said, you know, I'd said, I think you could get that built for $35,000 to $40,000. So I went out and got bids for that, and at that time, which Mr. Arseneau had reached out to us, and, but Mr. Barberied said, if you can build it for $35,000 to $35,000 to $40,000, let me know. I'll write you a check for $35,000. And I said, great, let me start working on some bids. Well, at that time, Mr. Arseneau reached out to us, and he told me that the owner was out of town and just to submit the bid to him, so I'd only got one at that time, but I submitted it to him, and then my wife also submitted an email to him that said, you know, hey, one thing might make this easier too, just, you know, if y'all want to buy us out. I mean, this is kind of, caused a lot of tension in our family as far as, you know, what's going to happen, or the sellability of our house, everything that we're doing, and so, anyway, we kind of got a smart aleck email back that said, we're not interested, the only thing that's going to make you happy is if we buy your house, we're not interested, so we're going forth with our site plan, and we withdraw any negotiations that you're going to get as far as a masonry wall, which I thought was a big old, you know, kind of letdown, but that wasn't what I got from the owner, but that's what I got from the attorney. So it goes back to the same thing as far as just the lip service that we've gotten, and we've been told this and told that, and I guess they made a deal with the other neighbors to give them a little two-foot extra fence so that they wouldn't show up today. But in the end, they're going to regret that. So I just hope that y'all kind of see nobody wants a parking lot in their backyard, so anyway, that's it.
May I ask quickly, and I didn't know you had actually submitted a bid, what was the price?
The bid was for 122-foot of eight-foot masonry CMU wall, which is the brick face on both sides, the nice cinder block, and it was $38,400 and something dollars, and it was from Dugan &amp; Fine Builders, and they're a commercial and residential builder. I spoke with Sam personally, and he, we walked it off, and, which I thought was a very fair bid, and if I had to come up with the extra $3,400 and something dollars, I would have paid that. If Mr. Barberied was willing to pay the $35,000, I'll pay the difference. I mean, that's going to block out sound, and that's something that's more permanent as far as a fence. I mean, I have a one-single-sided fence, it's not double-boarded, it's just a single fence that if you put a buffer there, who's going to look at that fence and see if there's maintenance needed on it? You know, is it going to be treated every year? Where a wall would be more permanent. And we had an agreement, but then, I guess it's been taken away, so.
Well, let me ask you this, if you were able to reach that agreement again, would you consider it?
Of course, I'm going to be against it, but it would soften the blow, I guess you could say, as long as there wasn't light. You know, that's the two big things, it's going to be sight and sound. The wall, I think, would block out some sight, or some, and maybe a little bit of sound, as long as the lighting plan is not something that's flooding in our yard. I don't know how you're going to do that, but maybe these engineers have a way of doing that.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
How long, how long have y'all lived with it?
We bought that house in September of 2011, so we've been there seven years, almost seven years.
Rachel Hansel, please.
If we accidentally set an order. So Rachel Hansel, 6139 Dillingham. So I just want to say, I don't think that you have to be touching the Superior Parking Lot property to be directly affected by it. And first thing I want to say is, what are the merits of this rezoning? And is there a compelling reason to rezon? Because at the heart, we're not, it's not just fences, it's, should we rezon this property? Is it good for the community, or is it good for one person? I think it's good for one person. And then most of the time, it's a single-use lot, and it's going to be an empty piece of asphalt 90% of the time, or 95% of the time, really. And the rezoning does go against the city's master plan. Reform Shreveport, who spoke earlier, they wrote a piece about it, and they kind of highlighted the incompatibilities with the master plan, and they also had some suggestions for alternatives, and we included a copy of their article in a packet we sent everyone. Because rezoning does not preserve the integrity of our neighborhood, and I know that it's not only a key policy in the master plan, it's important to you guys as well. In a recent rezoning case, I heard several of you express that this is a significant issue for you. And we've also, you know, we've been to neighborhood meetings, we've attended council meetings, MPC meetings, taken off work, gotten 200 signatures on our petition, and there's only been one voice in favor of this, with all of us being not in favor of it. And, you know, he's purposely flouted the law. His rezoning not only rewards his bad behavior, I think it encourages it. Would every business owner be allowed to behave this way, or is he getting special treatment because of who he is? And I'm also afraid the precedent sets for this, because Mr. Barberied has shown interest in other homes in our neighborhood, and if he purchases those, like, will those also be rezoned? Like, where do you draw the line? So that scares me personally. And so, yeah, we've had our, we've had 200 people sign a petition, and then no one has spoken in favor of this in our neighborhood, and Reform Shreveport has often, you know, spoken against it. It only benefits one person. And then I wanted to address a couple of things I heard Mr. Arseneau say yesterday. He said that the parking lot depths would be almost the same as the Pizza Rev, the Pizza Rev lot, and I wanted to know what almost is, because where, when I look at the map, it looks like to be a whole lot deeper to me, so I just want to know what exactly the exact depths are. And then also, they were talking about like the Pizza Rev depths, so Pizza Rev does not have 74 spots over the required amount like Superior does, so I think that should also be taken into account. And that's, oh, also one more thing. Mr. Sweeney said something about it was the new law's designed to not be obtrusive, but when I also look online on Google Maps, Superior's parking lot looks to be take up about 80% of their property, just by looking, so it's like, it's not necessary, I don't think they need it, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay. Rachel. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Councilman Flora.
Yes, sir.
When you begin your talk there, you talk about, what about sounds from coming from the parking lot? Can you describe those?
Yeah, I'll say recently, a few weeks ago, because my husband and I walk, walk our dog often, that the, you know, sometimes they have party buses come, they drive people and drop people off, and there was a bus parked at the end of the parking lot with the doors open, blaring music while they were waiting for the patrons to come back, come back outside, and so that's loud, and whenever they have live music, we can hear it. And then, you know, when there's people in the parking lot, sometimes, you know, they get rowdy, and you can hear them, and they also like kick up the gravel lot that's there. Now, they kick that all into the street, and it can be loud sometimes, for sure.
Something similar to a honky-tonk or something like?
I mean, I think Kicks Brooks was there a few weeks ago, so, I mean, I would say you could consider it a honky-tonk. Thank you.
Make sure that's in the record.
Hey, guys, my name's Rachel Hansel, I live at 613 Dillingham, with Rachel right down the street staring at the pros and new lots. I think y'all are familiar with the case, clearly from all this, you have the packet we mailed with photos detailing the current states of Superior's maintenance of its grounds, letters from the neighborhood, the handwritten petition. maintenance of its grounds, letters from the neighborhood, the handwritten petition. You also have a list of the inaccuracies and contradictions to them, the recommendations the NPC sent you. Current online petition was at 197 in opposition at the time we left to come here. Hopefully, it's broken 200 by now, but we'll just call it 197 for accuracy. Others spoke to the merits of the rezoning. I think we've heard why we don't think there's any merit to it. Those publications have proposed alternative solutions, as has our neighborhood group. But Mr. Barberie seems intent on getting his way. I'm not sure why the neighborhood is out walking the property, calling businesses to get bids, calling other businesses to talk about shared parking lots, submitting plans, while Mr. Barberie has done, as near as I can tell, nothing but talk to the hoesies and the good pastors. He's basically hired a lawyer to bully us around while we're out doing work to actually solve the problem, which I do find personally objectionable. Mr. Flair made a great point on the rezoning two weeks ago. We have to ask if proposed changes promote public safety or welfare. Bringing in more cars to a place known for its great margaritas, I would argue, does not promote safety nor welfare for the community. Mr. Bradford talked about maintaining the integrity of neighborhoods, tearing down a house to build an illegal lot, then trying to do it again and only trying to rezone when you're caught doing it second time, I would argue distinctly takes away from the integrity of our neighborhood. Mr. Arsenault, if you're not familiar with the definition of encroachment, zoning 15 years ago before a lot of the current people moved in is not actually encroachment, that's having encroached. Encroaching is buying a lot, building an illegal parking lot, having that for a year, then buying another house, destroying that, and attempting to put up an illegal parking lot before you stop. That's actually literally the definition of encroachment. I think the big question, guys, is why one person wants, and not needs, but just wants. Those wants should trump the entire neighborhood. My wife and I moved back to her hometown to be closer to our family and to try to raise one of our own. I would hate for that town to be one where one man's millions speak louder than the voice of an entire community. And I think that's what we're up against. Parking lots decrease property values in these situations, full stop. They just do. That's bad for our city. Lot filled with trees and grass absorbs heat, parking lots act as a heat trap, and they radiate heat later. That's bad for our community, full stop. More cars create more danger for pedestrians and runs counter to the goals of the 2030 master plan as outlined by Mr. Sweeney, full stop. That is against what we're proposing. The closed lots also require a tension pond, that if it fails, could flood three houses downhill from it, one of which is mine. That's bad for just me, but I'd like to think the city would feel terrible if that happened. So that's just me. And again, I'd like to point y'all's attention to the current state of Superior's retaining walls and the maintenance they've done or not done on them. We were told Mr. Barberie's threatened to leave the lots vacant and untended if he doesn't get his way. That's fine. All available data that we've been able to find shows that two vacant lots will do less harm, both to property values and socially than a bar parking lot will. So the neighborhood's happy to accept tis tantrum is the lesser of the evils in this case. If y'all haven't caught Superior on a busy night, you've surely seen one of the fights that went viral. Y'all talked about it yesterday. Mr. Arsenault mentioned yesterday that sometimes fights just happen at restaurants. I don't know what restaurants he goes to. I don't think he's inviting me to dinner anytime soon, so that's fine, but it sounds like some pretty scary places.
Okay.
So, okay.
James. Thank you.
Questions?
One question. How long have you lived?
Five years.
And I'm just going to say, you may not want to answer this. Are you familiar with the good pastors?
Yes, sir.
And something was added to the equation. I mean, it was, it was on the table, but I thought it was a part of the totality of your opposition. And that is the wall. I mean, a wall would satisfy the good pastors. Would a wall satisfy the other residents?
It's a wall would take, to be clear, he said it would not satisfy, and that's what he's reiterated now. It would just make it less bad for his, they have two children under the age of eight.
That's not the compromise, no.
No, so that's if, if we lose, that's what he would like to mitigate the damage done to his eight-year-old and six-year-old and four-month? All right, to the kids. So, and to be clear, the hoesies are not here today because they bought their silence with two feet of fence. Jay does not approve of this. He just is so scared for his kids that he was willing to trade two feet of fence for a silence, which I understand. If we had kids right now, I would make the same deal, quite honestly.
Well, I'm clear.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all so much for your time and your patience.
Mr. Brusard.
Rob Brusard, 451 Sanford, Shreveport, Louisiana. I feel your pain. We went through it too. And the thing that I'd like this council to recognize, you see those young folks? They're leaving Shreveport. They're leaving Shreveport. And maybe it's because people aren't listening to them. When we talk about the integrity of neighborhoods and we talk, when I hear a council member say, get over it, you know, it's the law, we're losing people, man. We're losing them hand over fist. Now, I don't agree with a lot of y'all on a lot of things, but I really think you need to listen to these people right here. Because in Broadmoor, what's, what's grown our membership from 27 people to 1,000 is that we listened to the neighbors. We represented the labors. We need to listen to these people. And I hope you do. Because we got bigger fish to fry than a parking lot. And when I look over here and I hear what Mr. Sweeney said about that parking lot, am I correct in that I heard that right now it's a parking lot, but future development could take place? Is that correct? Is that correct?
I mean, we can bring him back up here, but I don't really believe, I'm going to summarize what I heard from him. Was that any significant change in this one plat would require to go back to the NPC?
Kind of like the significant changes we got with the storage facility.
And it did go to the NPC.
But it changed. It morphed into that giant structure that sits on the border of our neighborhood, by the way. Thank you, young folks, for coming up and fighting this battle because sooner or later, people in this town are going to get tired of this kind of mess. Thank you, city council members.
Thank you.
Mr. Fertitta.
My name is Joe Fertitta. I have property at 755 Montrose, which is adjacent to Pizza Rev. With the exception of Mr. Weiner, I'm the second oldest person in the room. Bill knows that I went on that corner in 1969. And when I went out there, zoning was pretty difficult. I did not get a liquor license for fear that I would totally destroy the entire neighborhood. That was what one of my neighbors said. Well, I was on that corner for 47 years. I operated it for 40. I never had a fight in my restaurant. We were all under the same rules, which Superior was, came in in 1983 or '84. And we had a 12 o'clock closing. We did not have a 2 o'clock or 4 o'clock opening hours like they do in other parts of the city, downtown especially, for around the boats and all that. And all of us complied with that. When I got my zoning in 2003, I took a vacant, a part of a vacant lot and part of a house I lived in and raised my two children in. That became a legal parking lot because I went through all the hoops that everything was supposed to be done. I did not skirt the law. I put up a privacy fence. I moved five feet back from each of the perimeters of the property so that I would be within compliance with that rule at that time. I don't have a problem with anybody expanding their business. I don't have a problem with anybody expanding their parking lot. I'm a businessman. If it benefits me and I can do it, and I can do it properly, I don't have a problem with it. And I think that's what we should look at here. Everyone here has a legitimate claim, including myself. I sold my lot and my business in 2017, and that lot was legal. It's zone B1, which is legal parking lot. Now, they're combined together into one property when I sold it to the Pizza Rev. They have met all the rules. They even went back in and blacktopped it. We had a subsurface drain system in there where we used SB rock and some grid work to let the water penetrate back into the soil. They really had as good a parking lot as you're going to have because that drainage system actually is better for the environment. It doesn't push water down the street on somebody else's property. It drains back into the soil. As I said, I don't have a problem with anybody doing what they need to do for their business, but do it right. And if they can't do it right, don't do it at all. Thank you.
Chris Lyon.
Hello, Chris Lyon, 609 Texas Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. But actually, our, my previous address in the late 90s was 736 Drexel Drive. My mother and father, Kathy and David Hopper, were the primary petitioners for the wall that sits on Drexel Drive today. And the reason for that being there is of many of the same reasons that we see this fight happening today. So I wanted to give you that anecdote, but also to read a prepared statement. Shreveport Caddo's Great Expectations 2030 Master Plan calls the area around Line Avenue and Piermont an urban village. A nationally recognized definition of an urban village is typically characterized by a medium-density housing, mixed-use zoning and good public transit, and an emphasis on pedestrianization, pedestrianization, and public space. The core tenets of an urban village include reduced car reliance and promotion of cycling, walking, and transit use, high levels of self-containment, which is people living, working in the same place, and facilitation of strong community institutions and interaction. Using these tenets, it can be reasonably argued that we should be building up instead of tearing down housing and making an area more useful for pedestrians while de-emphasizing the use of cars. To accomplish this mission and to preserve the existing housing, businesses like Superior Grill should be encouraged to share parking with neighboring properties. And if crossing Line Avenue is necessary, then perhaps the city should invest in public safety improvements. Part of the trouble is that we don't have a system or a culture and a place to have open or creative discussions about solutions. We're often busy looking at the letter of the law rather than following its spirit. The master plan is supposed to be a guide for us to follow and to look forward to as we move forward into the future. But if we're not paying attention to it or selectively using it, then why do we have it? Thinking deeper about how to resolve problems that create the least impact for our neighbors and that is conducive to building a more safe and efficient community. Ultimately, what the NPC has been tasked with specifically on investing, on implementing the master plan and using the codes as enforcement, we can come up with creative solutions that prevent stifling business growth while also protecting the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we're here today to have the same argument that my parents had to have in this body 20 years ago. And I'd like to see that the neighbors, in this case, not be walled off, but instead participating in the growth and economy of the community without those restrictions in place. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, no further comments.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. No, I was going to say, since we took up this order and suspended rules, it's in order to make the motion to move forward.
I thought there might be some discussion.
With the motion.
I mean, I'll make a motion.
I don't know the order, but I think we can have a motion and still have discussion. Right. Motion second, so we can have some discussion. But I mean, if you're, if there's not a clear motion that somebody wants to make, then I don't think we have to do that first.
Well, but under our rules, we generally ask that you would make a motion to adopt, and then you can argue for or against that motion.
Well, if I have to do it that way, I will do it.
I'll make the motion.
You make, it's going to get a little...
To adopt.
The motion by Councilman Corbin. And second by... I'll second it, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But notice the difficulty of all of us in having to even discuss this. It's a tough situation.
Well, I'm happy to go first. You know, I spent a lot of time with the residents, a lot of communication. Obviously, I did spend a significant amount of time talking to Mr. Arsenault and his client. And I would, I would certainly think that his involvement improved the situation, his direct involvement. Because one thing I have to say that's very difficult to get over, the way this deal started is offensive to me personally. And I think it is a terrible, terrible standard. Does that mean if anybody wants a parking lot, the solution is you go raise down a few things and then show up at the NPC and say, hey, I'd like to turn it into a parking lot, their own houses anymore? And that is not, I mean, I get it that you can do that illegally. And there's no requirement for the city or the NPC to make them build houses back there. But I, I mean, I, and I do appreciate the efforts that Superior has made to try to accommodate. Apparently, you know, those maybe in some cases didn't achieve what they had hoped, but that I, early on, said I would support the residents, those that are adjacent property owners. And I'm honestly not convinced that that's really been achieved in this case, though I do appreciate the efforts that, you know, the owners of Superior and Tom Arsenault have made. So I would ask that you vote against this, I guess, motion. Okay.
Councilman, I mean, Flair. I'm sorry. I'll speak. I mean, I do just want to say, I mean, this is a very difficult one, both because a lot of times on the council, you have to realize, you know, I mean, we're being asked to make a specific decision about what's in front of us. I mean, it's a yes or no on a specific, in this case, you know, it's a zoning change. So there are a lot, all these other issues, you know, but, but we're being asked to really just vote on the zoning change. And, and then there are characteristics that you're supposed to look at that. And, you know, but the overall sum total of the situation still comes to mind, you know, it's still, it's still relevant. And so it is hard because, yeah, you're looking at something that, in my understanding, if what I looked at is correct, like, one of these houses was removed in 2013 or '14. It's been gone for quite, quite some time. The other one was removed last year. Neither were permitted for a parking lot. They've just been used as a parking lot for a number of years. And so it's hard to imagine, I mean, like you say, like, you know, denying this doesn't put those houses back, you know, and, and I don't know what it does. But what standard do you set the other way? And as somebody who recently had, you know, in, in my district, last year, I think it was, may have been a year and a half ago, somebody moved a house onto an empty lot just without a permit over a weekend. And, I mean, it was in my neighborhood and my neighbors are still furious about it. And I am too. But there's nothing we could really do at that point. And so I sympathize with that, you know, but that doesn't make this decision, you know, easy in any way, shape, or form. So thank everybody for participating in this process. This just ain't an easy one. I hope to hear from some other, you know, perspectives as well. I just, we got Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, Jeff's comments are right in that every zoning case is tough. Zoning cases like this in a neighborhood can sometimes be a little harder because there's emotions involved. There's, there's financial commitments that, that folks have made buying their houses. There's also financial commitments that business owners have made. Prior to the UDC, if we had a case like this, we usually had the ability to add some stipulations. And, you know, a stipulation that we might talk about is, is the hard masonry fence or something like that to, to appease some of the adjacent property owners. As I understand it, with the passage of the UDC, we can no longer add those stipulations. And that's unfortunate, especially in a case like this. You know, when you start looking at, at the facts, I don't think that, that anyone who has, who has spoken to us today bought their house prior to Superior Grill being in operation. The houses being torn down, you know, I'm assuming they got a permit to tear those houses down. And I guess there's no reason for us to, us as a city to ask when somebody says, I'm going to tear down a house, there's no reason for us to ask, what are you doing with it? And nobody goes out to check to see what's going on with that, with that lot. And maybe that's an area that should be on our, on our radar moving, moving forward. an area that should be on our radar moving forward. I don't know, and I guess, Mr. Arsenault, this question's for you, is if you think that the business owner may be open to some additional discussions, would there be any reason to postpone this for two weeks to let those additional discussions happen? And you may not even have an opinion on it, I mean, you may not can speak for the business owner because he's not here, but I would certainly support, if there was room for more negotiation, putting it off no more than two weeks if we thought we were gonna get somewhere. And if we don't feel like that's worthwhile, then we should not prolong the pain.
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oftentimes, Mr. Chairman, we are confronted with these type of decisions, business development or expansions versus affecting the quality of life in Morne's neighborhood. And I will say, and it was mentioned earlier, that the participation of the neighbors and those that are interested in maintaining their neighborhood's integrity is welcome and appreciated. I was confronted with something similar to this many, many years ago, but it was a little different in that we took on a campaign to stop additional liquor stores from being placed in our community. Business people was saying, you know, you're infringing upon my ability to make a living, neighbors were saying, but those type of establishments are gonna be detrimental to our future. Now, this, again, doesn't reach to that level, but it does say to me, in that my understanding is that when neighbors and residents and citizens feel like they need to take a position, they need to take a stand, they need to come out, they take a stand, it means something, it means a lot, and that overall, after all, I mean, you are the people that put us here to look out for your interests. I don't envy the councilmen of that district, but at the same time, and I often say, you know, I mean, again, my premise is maintain neighborhoods when we can maintain neighborhoods. And a lot of times, we don't see things together, but once it comes to our doorstep, we can understand. So I understand what you're saying, I appreciate what you're saying, and I appreciate you feeling very strongly to make your position and your feelings expressed in this body. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna support Councilman Jenkins in denying this expansion and allowing the neighbors to continue to have the type of neighborhood that they desire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to say, I appreciate all the statements that were, and comments that were made today from both sides, and I listen and I hear, you know, one may say that this is not easy, and I appreciate everyone's comment up here also, but to me, I think it was relatively easy, because sometimes you have to put yourself in someone else's shoes or their place and understand where they're coming from when their quality of life is being invaded. So I get it and I understand, and I'm supporting Councilman Jenkins also, and I don't think, I'm not in favor of a two week or a postponement, I just think it'd raise more havoc for those people that live there, so it's not that hard.
Mr. Chairman, I just simply wanna say I don't support postponing either. These folks have been through enough back there, they've been the MPC, they've been through everything, they deserve a decision today.
Previous question, Mr. Chairman.
Well, one more, Councilman.
I'm sorry.
To the city attorney, if then either side doesn't like the outcome, then it goes, they can take that to District 1.
That's correct.
Okay.
Please vote.
The motion carries with fail.
Fail's 42, I think.
Because we may have voted the wrong way.
The motion was to approve.
The motion was to approve, so fail, so it was denied.
Denied, correct.
You, I think you voted the wrong way, but it does...
I voted the right wrong way.
It ended up being another.
You may have clicked the opposite of what you intended, but the result was the same.
They know where my intent goes, and if we can change that on the record, I'd like to fix that.
We call for a revote.
I want the record to show that...
There's no objection, you can vote again.
I'm sorry?
There's no objection, vote again, right?
No objection.
Now, if my switch is, I might have an objection. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Okay. By the one and one absent.
Okay. Okay, so let me just ask a question for, for our record. Had we ended up in a 3-3 tie right there, what would have happened in this case?
The motion would have failed.
The motion fails.
And then what?
It's a failure, it's the same action that just occurred, it's denial of the...
Okay, because the last time we got to a 3-3 vote, it ended up passing, so I wanna understand why at one time...
I think because of the nature of the request. Like, you know how this time it was a motion that you were asking against?
And remember, this is a decision, the last time was on appeal.
Oh, the last time was on an appeal?
It wasn't under the UDC.
Oh, because it wasn't a rezoning, it was a special use, or is it changing special use problem?
Correct.
Okay, got it, that's different.
Before the UDC, they make decisions. After the UDC, they only make recommendations.
So that one was because the decision was to grant a special use, or some type of modification, their special use permit?
Mr. Chairman, I got a dinner counting on us getting out of here, so I would like that we go back to the order day.
That thing's, we're moving like way ahead of yesterday. We didn't even vote on anything yet.
Mr. Chairman, we under regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage, which require only one reading. Resolution 73 selects the Times as the official journal for the City of Freeport.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Emerson. Please vote. Motion carries with six and one absent.
Resolution 74 authorizes, as an amendment to the agreement authorized by ordinance 46 of 2010...
This needs to be postponed until June 26, Mr. Chairman.
Motion postponed.
Second. Moved by Councilman Corbin and seconded by the Vice Chair. Postpone. Please vote. Yes. Motion carries with six and one absent.
Resolution 80 authorizes waiver of permits and inspection fees for Renaissance Neighborhood Development Corporation.
So move.
Second. Moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Councilman Bradford. Please vote. Motion carries with six and one absent.
We're now in introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to June 26. Resolution 81 authorizes submission of the 2018 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Resolution 82 authorizes mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with South Central Planning and Development Corporation for the use of the MyGovernment Online Software Solution and other related software to execute any and all related future documents and/or CEAs with SCPDC to carry out the intent of this resolution. Resolution 83 authorize the mayor to execute an act of correction to a cash sale deed to include a waiver of the city's rights to enter or use a surface of the property for any purpose related to the reservation of mental rights.
Move for introduction.
Second. Moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Emerson. Move for introduction. Please vote.
It's not gonna click, but it's not going to.
Yeah.
Motion carries with six and one absent.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to June 26. Ordinance 49 amends the 2018 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 50 amends the 2018 general fund budget. Ordinance 51 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement of the city-owned property located south of and adjacent to 6235 North Lakeshore Drive to Deborah Ann Sharp and Rebecca Gail Sharp Stern for the purpose of leases, lesses to maintain and improve the subject property. Said property is not needed for a public purpose. Ordinance 52 will revise certain provisions of Chapter 38 of the code, specifically revise in Section 38-61 relative to allowing the director of public works or his or her designee to increase or decrease or require a 25-foot buffer between developed and undeveloped tracts.
Second. Moved by Councilman Flurry and seconded by Councilman Emerson. Please vote. Motion carries with six and one absent.
We're now in ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 30 was previously postponed until July 10, so no action is necessary. Ordinance 44 amends the City of Shreveport 2018 grants special revenue fund budget.
Submit. Second. Moved by Councilman Emerson and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. Please vote.
We can't vote?
Can't vote.
Hold that one.
But we're not voting, okay, is this on, I intend, Mr. Weiner, to bring you up during the next public comment section? I intend to bring you up during the next public comment section, since we're not actually voting on that piece of legislation today. I know, we just postponed the vote, on the very end of it, it says until July 10, 2018. If you read the...
We had previously postponed it.
We had previously postponed it till the very end, on the very last, it doesn't show it on the printout?
It does.
It does show it on the printout?
I got this right outside.
Yes, sir, so read the back, if you could, John, can you show them where I'm talking about on the printout? But I do, for the sake of this, we're not voting, I'm gonna bring it up during the next public comment section and give you a chance to talk, we had already gotten past it the last time, so, okay. Oh, his version doesn't show.
It doesn't say on y'all's printout?
Okay.
Okay.
It's online.
It's on the online version, I apologize, it's on our, here in our electorate, and it's not seen, I apologize. Okay, yes, sir, but I do have your ticket right here for the next section. Okay, sorry.
I think we're on...
We're on 44?
44, for caller question.
I think you have 30.
And a motion seconded to adopt.
Would you give us the, who made the motion to adopt in the second?
Councilman Flurry made the motion and Councilman Emerson seconded. Motion carries with six and one absent.
Ordinance 46, to revise and update Chapter 78 of the code in regards to design guides for street pavement and private project inspection fees.
Okay, the amendment is just the way the doc, am I on the wrong one?
No, you're on the right one.
The amendment is something about how it's structured in the document or something? Can't remember what the...
It has one sentence.
Would you like me to have Mr. Furlong come up?
Please.
Yes, please, yes, ma'am.
That would be helpful.
I just can't find...
It shouldn't be in the...
The amendment accomplished two things, it got it into the most current format, and it also added a sentence, this kind of catch-all, that the design and construction must be in accordance with the standard specifications in the UDC. And that's about private, I mean, it just says design of private redways. Public and private.
Okay, so move on the amendment.
Second. Moved by Councilman, Jenkins seconded by Councilman Emerson. Please vote. Motion carries with five, one absent, one out of the chamber.
So moved as amended.
Second. Moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Please vote. Moved as amended, motion carries with five, one absent, one out of the chamber.
Are we now in the ordinance number 48, an ordinance to close to vehicular through traffic a portion of Montrose Drive between Lyon Avenue and Dillingham Avenue.
Can I just ask for it to be removed? Ask that thing...
As the author, you can withdraw it.
Withdraw it.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda. Mr. Chairman, we have one item on the table agenda, ordinance number 17 of 2018, I'm not aware of any desire to remove it from the table.
I think the chairman likes his name on there every week, so just keep it as a running way of surety.
And we'll just keep it tight. Didn't have a property standard?
No.
Yes, it has. And the other appeals, Mr. Thompson, no?
We have no other appeals.
Oh, the annual reports from officers of the board committee.
I'd just like to see if I could get a confirmation of a good date for an infrastructure committee meeting in the next couple of weeks, if you could send me, I mean, I'd like, you know, it doesn't have to be before Council Day, unless members of the infrastructure committee, you know, can only make it that day, sometimes, I think.
I would ask that it not be the next week council meet, because I'm actually going out of town on city business for two days during the next.
Well, that is another good reason, but, you know, really, I was hoping next week, I mean, I'd just like to do it sooner, so, you know, are you gonna be out of town then?
Next week, during the week I'm due.
Good, great, so if we can get some dates, I'll let the council know, and we'll try to get together.
And so that property standards can continue to function well, I am stepping down as the chairman, and Councilman Flurry will be the chairman of property standards, just wanted to make that known to everyone. Anything else? My pay will be cut, and just take it as it comes. Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk for you?
I've been instructed not to give one.
Not to give. Any additional comments, Madam Mayor, do you have any additional comments?
I just wanna remind those who have tickets for the kickoff Independence Bowl Walk-On Dinner this evening with Drew Brees, you need to be there about 6 o'clock, they start serving at that time, and then, of course, the program begins at 6:45. Thank you.
All right, any council member have any additional comments? Councilman Flurry?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer my condolences and deepest sympathy to Stephen Jackson's family, his mother, Miss Patricia Blaze was my wife and our very close friend, we met her working in the election voting process, and we became friends and stayed close contact, and I am so sorry to learn of her passing, and I believe that the funeral's scheduled for Saturday.
Yes, Saturday, yes. Any other council member?
I do have one question, and it's really a broader question that I don't necessarily need a response on, but I'd like to think about it, and if somebody's got opinions up here, I'd be interested in hearing them, as well as from the police department and the administration. So we have a door-to-door solicitation policy that, other than, I believe it's political or religious, door-to-door... or religious, door-to-door solicitation is prohibited in the City of Shreveport. Now, there is a provision where you can apply for a permit for door-to-door solicitation, and I'm not aware of too many of those permits being given out, i.e., very rare during our... What's that?
I think there's like four.
That have been given out ever?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think there's four or so now.
Okay, and so, I'd like to know a little bit more about the criteria of why the permits... What are the considerations whoever's evaluating these permits? And like I say, it doesn't have to be now, but people are kind of saying, hey, well, now we got a thing in there. Well, I mean, one person was removed because he was doing it before his permit was approved, but apparently had a permit in the system. So, whether we talk about it here in two weeks or communicate via email, but I kind of need some kind of policy area on how that approval deal is being set.
I'll set up some time with you. There's some additional circumstances you need to be aware of.
Okay, and that's the reason why I'm using the form that if people have input for it, I'm wanting to take it because I don't know what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know a number of us have received comments from citizens about recycling pickup for items that are outside of the recycle bin, like excess cardboard boxes and things like that. At our next meeting, Mr. Crawford and I have been working on some things with that and got some emails back from Republic. So, at the next meeting, we'll discuss that briefly, but, you know, in a nutshell, Republic's response so far has been, we'll try, but you should get a second bin if you have excess items. So, I'll give you two weeks to think about that, and we'll chat about it in two weeks.
Are you giving external affairs for them as well as in another ordinance?
Or the world.
Okay. Public comment.
Okay. And, Mr. Weiner, you have D. thirty as an ordinance number. Apologize, I got it after we had moved through that, and I told you I'd hit you up.
I'm Bill Weiner, number two, Longleaf Lane. I'm here to talk about Councilman Flurry's submission to change the MPC to make it city owner only. I've spoken here many times, I'm not gonna reiterate all the reasons not to do it, but attorney, do you have a copy of the ordinance? I had it and I lost it along the way.
I have a printed copy, Mr. Weiner. I have a copy online.
Could you just read the top paragraph?
For the proposed ordinance?
Yes. Just start at the top and I'll stop you after.
Whereas it is in the public interest, that's...
Yes.
For the City of Shreveport to create and operate an internal city planning, zoning, and development department along...
Okay, that's enough. It is not in the public interest. I could tell you why and why and why. It will cost more, it will do less, it will be inappropriate and ineffective. I've gone over this all so many times, and I ask you just to withdraw this. It is ill-informed, stupid, can lead to corruption, and right now, we have a balance. The city has a control on the board of the MPC, and when it can be appealed here, there's no reason to change it. It's a good checks and balance the way it is, so I'm not gonna go in and use a lot of time, but it'll be brought up next time.
It appears July tenth, so not next time, but the time after.
Good, thank you.
You bet. Mr. Jason Cram.
My name is Jason Cram, four seventeen Lake Street. Thank you for the council for hearing me today. What I want to address is there was a closure about 2014 that was made on Lake Street. That was done to create a no-blow zone for the Holiday Inn. It was supposed to last two years. That two years has come and gone quite a while. We have a substantial investment in the four hundred block of Lake Street. You have shut down our thoroughfare, and now, after two years past the reopen date, we are requesting that y'all review and reopen that thoroughfare. Appreciate y'all's time.
I will just say for the record that if that isn't closer to being moving forward, before I leave this council, I will put forth another ordinance to review, because I know I was one of the guys for it the first time, thought we'd get it done in two years. It hadn't happened, and so I certainly am sympathetic, and probably not as frustrated as you, I recognize that, but there are several of us up here who are...
If I could, sir? The one thing that we would request, I mean, we're not out for Holiday Inn, we're not against them, we want business downtown, we put a substantial investment downtown. However, the engineer's office was supposed to give quarterly updates on this. My understanding and talking to Mr. Everson was that only one update has ever been given in the entire four years. Every other update has been us badgering to try to get some, but as far as giving it to the council and it being given to the property owners of Lake Street, that has not happened, so, you know, if it takes more time, we're sympathetic to that, but the communication's not there, and we're asking if the communication isn't going to continue forward that they go ahead and open it. Thank you.
Mr. John Gillan.
Mayor Tyler and council member John Galoon at four twenty-one, four twenty-three, four twenty-five Lake Street, seven one one oh one. That's my daughter.
Katie Larson with the Agor Borealis on Lake State.
In 2014, ordinance ninety-eight, in addition to Jason, ordinance ninety-eight was adopted over the concerns of many bothered, quote-unquote, Lake Street business owners, and it was resolved to spend the money to make safety improvements at Union Pacific Railroad Crossing with a timeframe of two years. Quoting Barry Rakoff from that meeting, "The short-term inconveniences would be worth it." As business owners wanted the downtown hotel to do well, the resolution went forward, the street traffic from Clyde Fant to Spring Street was closed for two years, January fifth, 2015. As I review the countless email stacks of white papers, legal documents, and articles by reporters on the Lake Street closure, I only wonder how much longer and arduous the process must be for those of us affected and the patience necessary as we await its conclusion. At that previous open forum, the gentleman manager of the Shreveport Times, Mr. Alan English, said he opposed closing the street as well. He made the very valid point that the city council should have looked into a solution that benefited all businesses, not just one. He said that the Lake Street leading to Clyde Fant is huge to their new printing press, and that he may not have bought that property a few years ago, knowing that Lake Street would be closed for a few years. All stakeholders, this is a quote, "All stakeholders should have been part of the discussion from the beginning. Today, those Shreveport Times buildings are being sold." Oops. As one of those affected, I would like to see this ended now, that is why we have gathered here at our city council meeting to resolutely make our case to reopen the lifetime, lifeline of Lake Street for the betterment of all our businesses, not just one of us, but for all of us. We who have worked so hard to help make downtown Shreveport thrive, who have put so much into our endeavors, and who too have paid the price in time, money, and effort. Personally, I'm not sure how much investment and sacrifice other owners and tenants here today have made, but in my case, it was a substantial sum, over half a million dollars. Because of the limited access to South Shreveport, from South Shreveport, business traffic from our only thoroughfare is cut off. What was approximately twenty-five hundred cars per day moving up and down Lake Street now is severely limited. People coming in from the south of town have to go deep into downtown and around to find us, who are really...
Sir, your time will give you a one-sentence summary if you would like.
Today, I have not made, been made of any, aware of made, any reports by the city engineering department on their progress. January fifth, 2017 has come and gone. The by-two date given originally for completion of this project, and we are all still waiting in the dark, still waiting, now three and a half years.
Sir, thank you. Okay. Okay. I'm guessing this next one is Mr. Brussard, but I can't actually read his name, but the address looks familiar, and he didn't maybe tell us that he put in two today. Some kind of radar...
I think you know where I live. My name is Rob Brussard, four five one Santa Fe, Shreveport, Louisiana. I've come before y'all today to talk about what y'all did, and I want to tell you, I'm proud that you voted to support the neighborhood, and I'm also very proud that you put Patrick Furlong as the new city engineer. We've worked with him with some projects, and not only he's been patient, but he's been very understanding of our needs in our neighborhood, and he's worked through some problems. One of the problems that he helped us solve is when we got this road improvement plan, I want y'all to listen to the streets that got, that were designated in Council District C. Dillingham, Piermont, and Oak Hill. Crestwell, Oak Hill, Gilbert. Gilbert to Centenary. Querby's, Gilbert Drive to East Seventieth. Oak Hill to Lyon Avenue. Huan, Lyon Avenue. When I saw that list, I recognized that our neighborhood was not represented, so I went to the mayor, Ann Patrick, and I said, "We need help. Our neighborhood's not getting their fair share." The mayor arranged for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars of street repairs to Broadmoor. Thank you, mayor. I appreciate that, because our streets are collapsing around us. I know that Gary Joyner talked about the Donut Hole, and I'm sitting here and listening today as you talked about building the Shreveport Commons and helping neighborhoods. Some of our older neighborhoods need help, too, and so I would appreciate it. I think you've been there when the battle was fought on the Oxford Houses, now there's eleven out of thirteen in Broadmoor. The Querby's Tennis Courts are not even playable anymore. Akron Street is still not started. Pennsylvania, Atlantic, and Steer are still collapsing around us. The Duck Pond, Captain Shreve contacted me and said, "Would you help us?" And I said, "Sure. We need the Duck Pond project moved forward to where we could get that green algae and put the right kind of pumps in there. That's a part, too." All of these community development-type projects impact, would impact Broadmoor, but also our neighbor, our sister, neighborhood associations. So, I'm asking, in the last six months, would you step up and help us accomplish some of these goals? We need help from the city. Gary Joyner said the Donut Hole is there, it's getting bigger. We've got to put a stop to it. At our next meeting, we have Liz Swain, who is our wonderful Liz Swain, who's going to be our guest speaker along with some other realtors to talk about what we need to do to turn the corner to make Broadmoor for sale, not for rent. And finally, in the meeting after that, on July the nineteenth, July the nineteenth, we have Brigadier General from Barksdale Air Force Base that's coming to show how Barksdale and Broadmoor are interconnected. We're closer to Barksdale Air Force Base than Airline High School, so we need to develop that, and they're going to come and work with us. Thank you.
Okay, Lillian Edwards, please. Well, I mean, why did we have to say that?
Ms. Edwards, go. Yes?
Oh, good evening. My name is Lillian Edwards, and I'm called, I came to talk to the mayor to ask you if you could please tell me why every time I put my trash can out, the city-issued green trash can, I'm being charged ten dollars a month for pickups?
Okay, first of all, Ms. Edwards, did you...
Yes, sir.
Did you give the street address?
Yes, sir.
For the record?
Three nine thirty-nine eleven Sandra.
Okay. I'm gonna say this, and I don't...
And I need to respond.
I will certainly let you know that.
Yes.
I am not aware that the city has green-issued trash cans.
We do not.
So...
What are those trash cans they bought to your house that you have to use now? Those not city-issued?
There's some that are black for regular garbage. I mean, I'm sick of them.
It's maybe a really dark green.
I mean, what about the color? That's not... Could you ask me please?
I can't, it's not my meeting, I'm invited to, but if...
I'll certainly let the mayor respond, I just want to...
I want the council to respond, too.
Okay, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Jenkins, the city does not charge you anything to pick up sanitation. We're the only city that I know of that doesn't charge.
Mayor, my water bill went up to twenty dollars and twenty-two cents. Then it went up to twenty-one dollars and seven cents. Every time I put my trash can out, my water bill be thirty-one dollars and seventy cents.
That is not...
I made several complaints with the city to the water department. I called back just on February, on May the third, and I spoke with a Mary Robinson, and I was telling her about this, and I had a water bill.
Yes, ma'am. Will you talk to us afterward? Because, will you talk to us afterward, because you're not being charged for sanitation pickup?
What am I, oh, so you charging me thirty dollars for one gallon of water?
I'm not charging you, ma'am. So, if you can let us do this offline, I'll have my water director to talk with you about your water bill, okay?
If you could just wait around in back, and they'll come talk to you, okay? Okay, Mr. Frederick Ellis, please.
How y'all doing today? I'm Frederick Ellis, three fifteen Lake Street, property business owner on Lake Street. So, I came down, my fellow business owners on Lake Street, asked if I'd come down and stand with them in regards to the issue of the closure on Lake Street, so I want to come down and echo the issue that they have. I also have that same issue as well, as being a business owner in Shreveport, that we need to open it up so that we can also, as a business owner, just like the hotels, we can also get the benefit of that increased traffic as well. So, I was just here to echo that and stand with them as business owners on Lake Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Craig Lee? Oh, you're...
Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect Street. We have a nice thing today. This weekend is our Juneteenth weekend. We're kicking off on June fifteenth, and I'm inviting you guys to come out for our first annual back-to-school giveaway with two of our standout athletes from the City of Shreveport. Express Sports is putting this on. Express Sports has been my client since nineteen ninety-six, the Warren Brown and Lonnie Bryant, two of our phenomenal Fair Park alums, with me and Brother Bowman here, and this is an opportunity for them to showcase two of their phenomenal alums from the Express Program. program. Andreas Greedy Williams of LSU and Radarius Leely Williams of Oklahoma State. Both of these young men are brothers. Andreas is actually being projected as being a top-five NFL draft pick in the 2019 draft. Express Sports, I want to just give you a little background on this phenomenal organization there, the best youth athletic and academic training organization in the city. They win phenomenal championships in football and basketball each year, but they're not just sports, they're mentorship organization spearheaded by Lonnie Bryant, who is their chairperson, and his vice-chairperson, who is the Warren Bryant. They've been around since 1994. They became my clients in 1996. I drafted their 501(c)(3) and I do nonprofit consultation for them. Thus far, we have two NFL draft picks that have come through our program. Our first was Dennis Morris, who is an alum from Woodlawn and Louisiana Tech, and he was drafted in the seventh round by the Washington Redskins a few years back. And then our most proud achievement was in last year's draft when Tridavious Shaq White was drafted in the first round out of LSU. We also have had a few others who have come out, but this is an opportunity now. We have two brothers who are potentially projected to be first-round draft picks, definitely Greedy is. But we are now cultivating in Queensborough, in Moretown, where Express draws most of their talent from, and I almost forgot, the other young gentleman who is projected to go in the top 10 as well, out of Spring Hill, Louisiana. His mother was so compelled about the job that Lonnie and the Warren are doing, she actually drove her son down from Spring Hill to be trained by them early in the ballgame, and he is now the top linebacker at LSU. So I'm inviting you guys out, the mayor out, on Friday at Salvation Army so that you guys can meet these young men. And what we're trying to do, and this is where we get into sports tourism, we have a sports commission, but we got to get them to understand the dynamics of the tourism dynamic from the sports standpoint, and we now start to get these guys early to see Shreveport as a bigger opportunity to do investments. So when they end up going to the NFL, they can now start to reinvest into the city so they don't see Shreveport as being a foreign place. Thank you, guys.
Craig, you didn't thank the rumor that you're trying to channel some of these to the Dallas Cowboys?
Nah, to the Saints, I mean, they...
I was going to say...
To the Saints, I mean...
Okay, and wouldn't be a meeting if we didn't have our man on the front row seat ready to give us some comments. Looks like he's got a prop. Bring it, Sammy, let's go.
You got that right.
You got a prop today.
I'll get to that, well, actually, it's because of Flag Day. I'll get to that in a minute. Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I took Don Hanley out to the airline tray hose for an early Father's Day as of last week. We enjoyed lunch together because he was probably going to be out of town, which is why I wanted to go ahead and do that before summer gets underway. Now, it's getting close to MDA, and I've already saved about $60 to $65 at the present time, and the MDA always and will continue to try to find a cure for muscular dystrophy, which they will continue doing. This kind of disease could affect anyone, anytime, anywhere, when you even least expect it. Since I've been giving for 29 years, I now want to make it an even 30, and that's what I plan to do. So I will continue and continue and continue for as long as possible that I can to help them. So if anyone today or any time can help me as well to help them, this would be very much appreciated, and I would really appreciate that very much. So please help me to help the Muscular Dystrophy Association fight muscular dystrophy. This will be a very good help, and that's why I also wanted to say that since they were advertising on the Barstow Federal Credit Union about the American flags that they've got, well, I picked up one. I'm an American, I didn't come from no outer planet, I didn't come from no Jupiter or Mercury or Venus or Saturn, as you can pretty well tell. I ain't got no antennas. It's true.
As we can pretty well tell.
Anyway, the fact is that, I heard that. Anyway, the fact is that I just want everyone to be sure to stop by the Barstow Federal Credit Union when you can to pick up a flag because we're all Americans and I've got mine right here to prove it. So also, I just wanted to say that I do have the, I am the prize that, as you can tell. See, the mud bug manager threw these about three weeks ago, and one landed right about five or six inches from me, and I thought I was a bologna sandwich until it was pointed out to me that it was waiting for me, so I got it. Now I've got nine of them, and one person asked the other day, "Are you a wristband collector?", and I said, "Could be."
Mr. Chair, that's all we have for public comments. I'd like to make a note of, let's try to have 6:00 PM dinners at least for Mr. Bradford because that really expedites the meeting, so if we could work out a way to arrange that in the future. I noticed it's about one minute.
Well, since we didn't make it, that we missed a minute, I think Councilman Crawford has a committee like to make.
Yeah, I'll get it. One minute, I missed my dinner. No, listen, Chairman, I'm trying to ascertain the request that was made regarding the closure of Lake Street. Who could bring us to date on that and how we can, how we can address that issue?
That's in my district, and we've had an ongoing kind of dialogue on email, you know, really, I hate, you know, I know Brian, I think, had given the most recent update, but I think that maybe the administration could...
And let me, let me respond to that because I heard the information about the quarterly report. You know, Robert was working with it, but there were some complications. I don't know what you and Brian talked about, he's on vacation. Patrick may have some information, and certainly I know that he has spoken with you about some of those challenges that we've had, but we want to, the updates, the last time Robert and I talked before he passed away, he didn't have anything to give you an update on because we still had some problems. And so, but let's, let's talk about where we are today, Mr. Furlong.
Thank you, Mayor, and just to kind of start at the beginning, we, after Robert passed away, we were picking up the pieces to figure out where this was left off.
I'm going to have to ask you to speak up because I...
Yes, sir.
Mics are all being a little sensitive.
How's that? Can you hear me now? So after Robert passed, we worked to pick up the pieces and figure out where we were at with the process, and we have, and we've been working through it. That is the first I heard, I have heard of the quarterly reports, and we certainly can do that, that's not a problem at all. Where we are with it, we were communicating with UP, you know, they put together the set of plans to do the construction, and they anticipated being done back in May. Recently, in the past several weeks, we have not been able to get a response from them. So at this time, I ask if you could give me, you know, another week to really push it, to reach out to some other people at UP and open up that line of communication again. We were communicating, but the past several weeks, we've reached out several times with no response.
Okay, reached out to?
To UP, the railroad company.
The railroad company, yeah. And just to give you a little bit of additional background, I mean, you know, well, I say you know, anyone who's worked with a project with railroads before knows that they're not always the easiest partner to work with, they're a bit, you know, they're insulated, they're a unique type of landowner. And anyway, so there were some issues of potential ownership of multiple railroads and some different things like that, and those have been sorted through now. There were, they really have picked up a lot of progress in the last few months, but really, it was a long time where there wasn't much happening. And so, they were making some headway, then in recent weeks, it seems like we haven't heard anything.
We did, we made some headway, we're making good headway with UP, and we reached out to the hotel, and I spoke to the hotel owner and had a good conversation with him.
Let me interrupt you, I appreciate that. I really, I really appreciate what you're saying, but the question that I'm asking is, if there was an agreement that has expired, and the agreement was valid in that it was pledged that the street would be opened within two years, why hasn't it happened? And if it haven't happened, regardless of what discussions are going on, how could we hold them, breach up the contract and get it back open? That's my question.
And I think that was the most current question that was posed that we were talking about with the CIO, so...
So, so we could, we have that information within the next week or 10 days?
I think probably what the Lake Street folks would, and I don't want to speak for y'all, but we've had enough conversations, I feel like I probably can, is that I think what they'd really most like is maybe a sit-down where we can all just map out what's going on, they can have a chance to express their suggestions for the solutions that they are envisioning and kind of, kind of work through it all.
And all due respect, Mr. Councilman, I'm going to ask the city attorney, if somebody has, has valid the contract, what is our options?
If there's a breach of the contract, we have options to file litigation against them, to try and negotiate prior to that. I'll get with the engineers and see exactly where we are in the process, and I'll pull the contract and the ordinance that closed the street as well, and make a determination of the best course after that, and I can report back to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, I appreciate it.
So, within, how long will we know, so they'll be able to know when they can move forward?
I'll get with Patrick tomorrow and try and provide you all with an update by Thursday.
If there's nothing else, this means the zone.